आज के दिन 11 नवंबर को झारखंड का जन्म हुआ था। और इससे भी बड़ा reason है, जिसको हम किसी वजह से celebrate भी कर सकते हैं, हालांकि वो हमारा loss है। आज विनोबाब भावी जी की पूरी तिथि है, जो की मातमा गाड़ी के विचारों को आगे बढ़ाते रहे। और संभवता वो last milestone थे, जो की गाड़ी जी को करीब से जाते थे। इस तरह ये दिन हमारे लिए बहुत शुभ है और आज इस गोश्त टीवी हैं, जो लोग यहां अपस्थित हैं। उनमें बहुत सारी ऐसी dignitaries हैं, जो की scholars, intellectually, high caliber people, media, bureaucrats, students, different society के different stakeholder, stakeholders, industry, think tanks, सभी लोग अपस्थित हैं। ये विषय एक ऐसा विषय है, जिस पे इससे पहले शायद बहुत कम चर्चा हुई है या चर्चा नहीं हुई है। मुझे याद आता है, आज एक speaker है, उनकी संस्था ने एक पहला discussion किया था। उसके बाद संभवता ये आखिरी ऐसी चर्चा है, जो दिल्ली में हो रही है। Planning Commission के ऊपर प्रधानमंत्री का वक्तव्य, उसके पहले लोगों की analysis, इस परिपरेक्ष में Planning Commission का क्या shape होना चाहिए, नई entity कैसी होनी चाहिए, इसका कोई लक्ष्य?
We are starting the day on a good note. Any intellectual exercise should involve the God before. We cannot appreciate prana, but can I invite you to appreciate the efforts of all these young students? Thank you very much, please have a seat, thank you, thank you. May I go ahead, may I have a permission to go ahead with this session now? I would like to invite the Chief Keir Shri A R Kohli जी and Shri T S R Subramaniam जी, Dr. Rupak Chaturpada and Professor Akis Sinha, please come and join on this stage. Dignitaries on the dais. Everyone present here, good morning again. Dignitaries on the dais need no introduction. But I'm going to be very brief in my welcome and introduction. Shri Keir A R Kohli जी has been governor of Mizuram from 2001 to 2006. He has been advisor to Chief Minister. He is one of those few persons in India who understands the issues of rural development, tribal development. And that's what he had been suggesting to Minister of Mizuram. Academically, an excellent student, he was the first badge of IM Calcutta. He taught the entrance examination of IMs that we have, which is supposedly, the economy says it is the toughest examination in the world in management education. There are few of the credentials, a professor in past and so on. There is something that, there is a secret which I got to know yesterday. I have not taken permission, but I'm taking liberty. When he was eight, in certain situation, he said to his grandfather, his father, his grandfather said to him, "Are you Ladshah?" "That you are demanding this?" He said, "Yeah, I'm going to become the Ladshah one day, please do what I'm trying to do." That means he has a vision and he has a plan. We could not consider, we could not think of anyone else who could have a vision and plan to talk about Planning Commission. May I request Dr. Rupak Chaturpada to present memento and welcome Shri A R Kohli. Shri Fal and Shal. And the AP of memento, thank you. Thank you sir, thank you for being with us. Shri T S R Subramaniam has been the Cabinet Secretary of Government of India. He is chairman of a High Power Committee on Environment today with this government as well. He is known for his love for India. He has done lot of work on culturally, to protect cultural heritage of India. He has invited many international institutions. These are some of the facts which are known and unknown. Of course, he has been one of the change agent who has been motivating corporate India to do more and better for the society. So, we, we wanted to invite Shri T S R Subramaniam to bring the perspective from how other stakeholders, who are not the actors of Planning Commission, look at Planning Commission, look towards Planning Commission. May I request Professor Akis Sinha to please welcome T S R Subramaniam जी? I have been asked not to go ahead with welcome of Professor Akis Sinha and Dr. Rupak Chaturpada because they are the host. But I would like to give a brief introduction of Dr. Rupak Chaturpada. He is presently the president and CEO of Forum of Retrations. The, the seminar that we are doing is Joint Seminar of Forum of Retrations and India Policy Foundation. He was previously the director of Asia Pacific Programs and senior director of Global Programs with the organization. He was also a member of Consultative, Consultative Group on Study of Inter-Governmental Relations and Dispute Resolution Mechanisms, Interstate Council, Government of India. And there are other associations, I'm trying to be very brief, so that we have more time for discussion. And I have special instructions from both the guests today, that we should have some time for question and answer, so that there is a better interaction possible today. Thank you so much. I will request Professor Akis Sinha is honorary director of India Policy Foundation. And of course, as you know, is one of the national thinkers on several issues which are concerning India, contemporary India. With this quick background, I will proceed with the main discussion now. I will request Professor Akis Sinha to give, to welcome everyone and offer the theme of the program today, thank you.
आज के सेमिनार के मुख्य करते थे, Shri Kohli जी, और मुख्य वक्ता, T S R Subramaniam जी, Shri Rupak जी, Rahul जी, और सेमिनार में अपस्थित मित्रों। जब आज हम Planning Commission पर एक सेमिनार organize कर रहे हैं, तो हमारे मैन में एक प्रश्न उठता है की आज इसकी आवश्यकता क्यों पड़ेगी? मित्रों 15 अगस्त को प्राइम मिनिस्टर ने एक declaration किया। यह योजना IO Planning Commission अपनी utility खो चुकी है और हम एक नया structure create करेंगे। मैं उम्मीद कर रहा था की इस देश की intelligence है, इस देश के NGOs, इस देश के think tanks, राष्ट्रीय सरोकार के, नेशनल concern के, इस महत्वपूर्ण मुद्दे पे, गंभीर चिंतन मनन करेंगे। But this declaration was not done by a leader of a political party, but by the prime minister of the country. इससे हम intellectual lethargy कहें, और division among the intellectuals कहें, not a single brainstorming session, there may be exception, has taken place. This is the most unfortunate part of the country. हमने जब सेमिनार को organize करने की बात सोची, तो हमारे दिमाग, brain में तीन ही बातें थीं, की आखिर Planning Commission को प्राइम मिनिस्टर ने समाप्त करने की बात क्यों कहीं? इसका हमें उत्तर चाहिए। We need answer from the government and the intelligence here and in our discourse. There is a quest. Why after a prime minister declared to end an institution, which had become the part and parcel of development discourse of the country? तो मैं यहां तक मानता हूं की, भारत की योजना IO Planning Process is the victim of infantile disorder. इसका ऐसा disorder था, जिसको correct, correct करते-करते Planning Commission, एक white elephant बन गया। वो disorder क्या था, मैं एक example देता हूं। 1930 से इंडिया में डिस्कोर्स शुरुआत Planning करती। और 1940 में आकर, that discourse got a country saved. उसमें दो proposal थे। Planning के बारे में अनेक प्रस्ताव आए, अनेक proposal आए, लेकिन दो important proposal था। One was presented by the socialist minded congresspeople. जो की एक तरह से governmental proposal था। Second was proposed by the eight industrialists, seven plus one, John Rathai के अलावा जितने साथ थे, वो industrialists थे या big business, were presented. तेरी दरवाजे, fundamental difference between the character of that business and industrial group and the presently we have. वो, वो national movement के, they were part and parcel of the national movement. So their concern was society, not only merely profit. वो जब Bombay Plan के नाम पर आया, उस पूरे plan के discourse से Bombay Plan को reject कर दिया गया। Their first attempt to deal with the mighty efforts of the private capital and private initiatives, private entrepreneurs by the process of, from the process of the plan. So the process of planning begins with the exclusion of an important segment of the society. Just like a example देता हूं, that was how much concern they, they had. उन्हें जो प्रस्ताव दिया था, उसमें कहा था की agriculture का growth in 15 years, this is 130%. Industry growth 500% and service sectors go 200%. Per capita income would be doubled in 15 years. This was an ambitious proposal with the complete groundwork. There was a clash between the private initiative and the Congress back initiative. उसमें एक छोटा दाल देता हूं की eastern economics, economists, जिसको billa on कर देते थे, उसने एक comment दिया था, एक remark दिया था। Mahalanobis को Jahla Nenu ने जब involved किया Planning के process से, उसने कहा, "यदि इनका environment हुआ, he is strategician, he is not any economist." तो it is a disaster for the country. वो कितना ठीक था, कितना गलत था, यह एक important नहीं है। Discourse के process से जब आप important segment पर store करते हैं, तो फिर planning imbalance हो जाता है। उस planning process में state पर planning एक privilege होने की जगह एक burden हो गया। Planning is the privilege of the state. But it has become a baggage in the burden. फिर उस baggage in burden को correct करने के लिए सेटने, time में लगी कोशिश की। Second जो planning के process में, जो हमारी गलतियां होती रही, पूरे discourse से varnakuval intellectuals and social workers remain excluded. जैसे भी Rahul जी ने Vinoba Bhavik का नाम लिया 15th अगस्त को, 15th नवंबर के लिए। But we forget Wirtsamunda. His contribution is no less than any freedom fighter of the country. He was born on 15th November. तो varnakuval नहीं, आप एक sociological study कहा लीजिए, जो planning process से first, second, third, five year plan से लोग जुड़े हुए थे। समाजसात्री अर्धन बताता है की they were great economists. They had great education. They could have spoken great English knowledge, they had the great English knowledge of the English literature and language. लेकिन भारत की अथाप से वो दूर थे। Reality से दूर होने के कारण जो planning process बनाया, intention अच्छा था, उसकी delivery नहीं होता। बाद के process से Gandhiyan, Gandhiyan, जो social activist and thinker थे, उनको सिर्फ planning process में just as a quota co-opt किया जाता था। There must be two, three Gandhians. They remain marginalized by their numbers and their efforts and their assets. यह exclusion जो था, जो की social relatives जुड़े हुए थे, जिनके कंधे पर झोला होता था, जो गांव, दले और tribal के बीच जाते थे, जिनके दिन प्रति दिन के जीवन से, विकास की प्रक्रिया से जुड़े हुए थे, उनके desires, demands से जुड़े हुए थे, उनके perspectives से जुड़े हुए थे, they remain excluded. बाद में जब ऐसे लोगों का assertion हुआ, for example, Balwant Rai Mehta or Shukh Mehta, it is two Gandhians who led the process of decentralization. और तीसरी बात जिससे Planning Commission, विरक्त रही, जिससे exclusion रहा, India is the country which has unparalleled demographic diversity. जब हम demographic diversity की बात करते, हमारे दिमाग में दो ही बातें आती हैं, identity, caste, community, language. लेकिन यह थाप नहीं। Demographic, demographic diversity is also oriented toward the skills of the people. आप छोटी जगहों पर जाएं, एक, एक caste है, उसका एक अपना skill है। वो अपने बच्चों पर education देने के, फॉर्मल education की जगह, informal skills पर develop करना चाहता है, ये जान नहीं। हमारा पूरा ancient India का history, formal education से अलग, informal education और skill development के आपफार चलता था। ये पूरा जो fertilizer system था, इंडिया के economy का, ये planning की पूरे discourse से गायब रहा। और छोटी-छोटी community है, जिनको base बनाकर, हम economy को develop कर सकते थे। जिनके skills का, जो आज प्राइम मिनिस्टर ने कहा, skills development के लिए ministry बना रहे हैं। यह हमारी economy का, society का एक integral part होता है। आज भी जो लोग गांव जाते हैं, जिनका गांव से संबंध है, वो देखते कैसे गांव में skills development होता है। और भारतियों की brain, हमारी, हम अपनी, आपकी संस्था नहीं कर सकते हैं। जो लोग, हमारे audience में social composition जो मैं देख रहा हूं, below forty, they are dominating. I'm happy that the seminar is dominated by the people who are the future of India. जो ये बच्चे अपना motorcycle servicing के लिए जाते हैं, वहां पर एक छोटू होता है, जिसकी age 10 से 12 साल की होती है। वो इतनी अच्छी motorcycle की servicing करता है, उसको लोग master कहते हैं। इस पूरी प्रक्रिया से विरक्त रहने के कारण, Planning Commission पहला उसने किया की right college is called delay estimize किया। अब देखिए, जिसको license permit quota राज एक्सट्रीम था, I consider that was extreme, उस license permit quota राज को हम खत्म कर रहे हैं। तो borrowed vision from the United States of America or the United or Soviet, former Soviet India. यह जो उधार ली गई, जो दृष्टि होती है, और उधार ली गई जो विवेक होता है, उसका अच्छा नहीं प्रभा होता। जब तक आप मौलिकता अपनी नहीं होती है, और मौलिकता अपरस होती है, जब अथाप से आप जुड़ते हैं, अपनी मौलिकता को आप पहचानते हैं। और इन बातों के कारण, आज Planning Commission, यह समझ नहीं का रहा है की हम planning के process को कैसे पढ़ें? 45 लाख करोड़ का बारह में योजना है, लेकिन hundred जो इंडिया के richest billionaires हैं, उनके पास almost more than 300 billion dollars है। 200 reaches of the country, control almost sixty percent of the assets of the country. तो planning के process से क्या हम एक, उस बड़े assets के holders को बाहर रख सकते हैं? जो दूसरा एक, मैन में सस्तिशन आता है, क्या नई, नई structure जो बनेगी, उसमें क्या private capital dominate करेगा? क्या हम बानी, अड़ानी dominate करेंगे? Or the plan will drift from the state privilege to the private capital privilege? No, it should not be. I agree one thing from the Nehruian era and the Nehruian consensus, that consensus is egalitarian society. India cannot dare, or no political party, no ideology can dare to drift from that consensus. वो एक, जो समानता, आवाजी समाज का सपना है, वो भारत का अथाप सपना है। उस सपने में दो बातों को add कर देंगे। FDI and private capital are realities now. राज्य के बाहर, अब ये private capital क्या करते हैं? इनको झारखंड के minerals और 36 के minerals, वो भी उनको लाता है, वो government से permission लेते हैं, neoliberalism के तहत, वहां जाते हैं, वहां पर development करते हैं, वहां क्या development होता है, नहीं मालूम, लेकिन उनके assets का development होता है। To they are outside the organized plan effort, efforts of the states. Planning Commission के bad man structure से बाहर होने के कारण, they are not accountable to the Planning Commission or they are indirectly accountable to them, so they get the more privileges as बाहर रहने के कारण। The planning है, वो private और public capital दोनों की responsibility है, इसके कारण private capital की भागीदारी हो। But the market and the process of development must be slave of democracy. So Indian state must play the dominant role. Rather, democracy should not become the slave of the market. इसलिए मुझे लगा की FDI की भागीदारी कैसी हो, एक holistic plan भारत के लिए हो, जिसमें varnakuval intellectuals, जिन्होंने बहुत काम किया, state से बाहर आकर, NGOs जिन्होंने बहुत काम किया है। तो British ने जो इंडिया की mapping, demographic mapping, mapping, resource mapping, developmental mapping, 19th सताब्दी में किया था, 19th century में किया था, आज उस mapping को करने की फिर से जरूरत है। It's the Planning Commission should not only be the resource allocated body, the resource allocation कर रहा है। और conventional wisdom से चलने वाली body हो, it should be a reality think tank, which should generate the idea, which should involve the varnakuval intellectuals, varnakuval activists. ये elite का privilege नहीं हो जाए। आप sociological study जो हम कर रहे हैं, की किन-किन लोगों को हमने involved किया, इसका एक अच्छी study होनी चाहिए की planning से जुड़े हुए लोग, bureaucrats, thinkers, academician का समाजसात्रीय पृष्ठभूमि क्या है? यह आपको unravel कर देगा की planning की बिफलता के कारण क्या है। इससे मुझे लगा की दीसी के paradigm shift, उस paradigm shift में अगर हम कुछ contribute कर सकते हैं, that will break. I'm thankful to government also, they have postponed the declaration of the structure. When we informed that we are organizing the seminar, they were going to, the prime minister was going to declare it before his Australia journey. लेकिन जब उनके दूर से पहले हमने inform किया उनको, we are organizing a seminar and we are holding the seminar and big investors are participating. तो इसको postponed किया गया, I'm really thankful to the government for that, और मैं Rahul जी को कहता हूं क्या है, और काटू बाय थैंक यू।
Thank you sir. After this team introduction, इस परिचय के बाद, हम अपने guests को सुना चाहते हैं। मैं निवेदन करूंगा Shri T S R Subramaniam जी से की वो आज के, आज के सेमिनार एक्ट्रेस अपना।
Thank you Dr. Rahul Singh, Chairman Kohli साहब, Sina साहब, Kabat साहब. Distinctive guests and delighted to be with you today. I think after the very pointed but exciting introduction given by Dr. Sina, he has put the issue in a very broad intellect warfare, looking at the paradigm shift that we require now, in a sense it has already taken place, the change of government in the last few months, new way of looking at governance, new way of looking at relationship between people and the government, already it's taking place. And surely there is room for your new thinking body in the country to reflect the new realities of the country and what we have not been able to achieve in seventy years, to set us again on that path afresh. What we failed to do, I think Planning Commission has that task to do right now. In my hurry and you mentioned the environment committee, I forgot till I came in the car, you know, I did new out of our planning commission, I didn't read structure and process. So, what I thought of yesterday and loaded down in ten fifteen minutes related to the new out of our planning commission. So I will be forgiven if I don't talk about the structure at this stage. But I feel that once you define what the new planning commission ought to do, I think it will be a failure if you define it too closely. You must allow it to grow, allow it new ideas to come. So if you, so shall we say if we define, define the new parameters, the initial parameters, and the whole object should be, it should innovate and build on itself, and that should be part of the structure of the planning commission. Before that, I think the easier task will be to say what it should not be. And let me start with that, in the last few years, the last ten fifteen twenty years, when Mr. Montek Aluvaria became the deputy chairman of Planning Commission, I had predicted at that time, ten years nineteen, two thousand four, two thousand five, that time, that we give another year for the planning commission to be wound up. As a champion of the free market, as a person who wants open market to decide papers coming out. Without knowing, some university in Wisconsin, some university in Berkeley, they will all produce suddenly papers, papers. Then the US will mention there saying we need negotiations on services, international negotiations on services. इंटरनेट डिगोसिएशंस ऑन सर्विसेस बाय डेट टाइम दे हैव प्रोड्यूस 20 और 30 पेपर्स फ्रॉम डिफरेंट एरियास इंडिया वुड हैव जीरो यू आर डिगोसिएशन विथ पीपल बैक बाय डॉक्यूमेंट्स 3 इयर्स 4 इयर्स इंटेंसिव रिसर्च एंड देन ओपिनियंस ऑलरेडी फॉर्म्ड ऑन डोस पर्टिकुलर रिगार्ड नौ इफ यू वांट तू अस्पायर तू बी अन पावर इन डी वर्ल्ड यू नीड तू हैव योर एबिलिटी तू ठीक योरसेल्फ यू नीड तू क्रिएट योर रोड एंड देयरफोर आई थिंक दिस इस अनदर एस्पेक्ट यू नीड यू नीड डाटा अनालिसिस कंक्लुजन सो इंडिया डिगोसिएटर्स नीड तू हैव डेट काइंड ऑफ बैकग्राउंड एंड डी बेस लेट मी लुक एट डी नेक्स्ट ब्रॉड पर्सपेंट व्हाट इस डी लिंकेज डेट आवर यूनिवर्सिटीज हैव विथ आवर गवर्नमेंट आई हैव एवं सीन अस्टॉनिशियली एवं आवर नेशनल लॉबोरेटरीज सीएसआर लॉबोरेटरीज विच आर गवर्नमेंट फंडेड लॉबोरेटरीज दे वेरी लिटरल कॉन्टैक्ट विथ आवर ओन इंडस्ट्रीज आई हैव सीन इन अमेरिका एवरी यूनिवर्सिटी हैव लाइव डायरेक्ट अप्लाइड साइंसेस अप्लाइड टेक्नोलॉजी कॉन्टैक्ट विथ इंडस्ट्रीज विथ इकोनॉमी विथ सर्विस सेक्टर दिस इस लाइव वन तू वन रिलेशनशिप आई हैव सीन इन यूरोप इट इस हाफ फेयरहाउस इट इस हाफ एकेलेमेंट एंड हाफ रिलेशनशिप इन इंडिया नियरली जीरो वे ऑल अब्शोर्ट साइलोज वी बिलीव इन अब्शोर्ट साइलोज
That is why I am here to talk about. Who will do all this? Surely, it will be bureaucratic machine with assistance. It has to be a loose bunch of people, half-mad people, but with some experience, who know India and give them a lot of freedom, a lot of flexibility and give them. Young, bright people are there, the research people, universities elsewhere. Give a choice for each of them to take two or three of them who are builders for the future. There are many possibilities, the structure can be built in many ways. But I thought it's a brand-new idea and hoping some of these will get accepted in the new family. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much sir, thank you. You have provoked us to, on some of the new issues to take it forward. We have a long decision, there are two panel discussions so that we can, uh, they have, they are planned to be panel discussions so that we can hear more experts on the issues. Uh, the second session, the first panel will start at twelve o'clock and the second panel will start at two thirty. Of course, editing is around, given to you at eight. Uh, with this background, there are two, uh, there is one submission and request. May I request you to please switch off your mobile or put your mobile on vibration so that others don't get disturbed? This is your question. With this, I will proceed. May Sri A R Khurvi ji say, nevele karunga, jo ki aaj ke mukhey di thi hai, main sir nevele karunga ki hotna mukhey.
I would like to say something. It was a very important question. It was a key question. I would like to share this with you. I have been a student of science and management. And I learned only one thing. If you have any problem, go back to fundamentals. Because any solution based on fundamentals is a lasting solution. And if you just make a solution based on the superstructure and fundamentals are weak somehow, that superstructure will collapse over a period of time. I'll go back to the history when this planning commission was created, just for two minutes. Yes, we need a plan. Again, as a student of management, what is a plan? It is where we are today and where we want to be tomorrow, that tomorrow is the gap of time. Should I leave alone or should everybody come? In the contest of the nation, everybody has a responsibility. That's the first part, a plan is a must. Because in management, there are only four words, planning, organizing, implementation and control. First you plan, then you organize the resources, then you implement. And if the results are not coming, you control that. Now I have changed my definition from control to facilitate and support. Because we have a democracy. In controlling, we start controlling people also who present. They don't feel that they are participating in the structure. So I say facilitate and support. So plan is required. We now be in the commission which was there because it went off the track. It worked with the lobbyists who manipulated the plan process. The why it has played and where it has played, I just touch only two features. Our forefathers, when they got freedom, they wanted, they brought a wonderful constitution of India. Where equality and justice was assured for every citizen and with dignity. After sixty-four and a half years, I want to ask the audience, have you read Daniel Toomey? The question is no. Today we have two parts of India. One is called India, competitive India, other is Bharat, this is elected India and Shakhal. Shakhal by circumstances today. This Bharat is mostly in cities and, because India is mostly in city and part of cities is Bharat, which is called slums of India. In the villages, it's only five to seven percent, which is India, competitive India, rest is Bharat. In nineteen forty-seven, our population was thirty-six crores and thirty-one crores were poor. Whatever that Y six was mentioned in that time. Today ladies and gentlemen, yes, seventy crore poor is in that country. I'm not accepting my mekha, given by planning commission, thirty-two rupees a day or above that. I don't know how they be managing. I'll bring first part, what is the profile of this Bharat? This eight hundred million people, they say why we are not part of this competitive India? And they are feeling a sense of neglect by the nation, which promised equality and justice for all. After sixty-four and a half years of planning and after sixty-seven years of editing. This India is going for cruelty. This India is going for criminal acts. This India is also voting against a state, that two hundred districts of this country are having vessels. Carry no illusions friends, they are family partners. They correctly owe taxes, they challenge the might of a state, say it is impunity. And they do whatever you feel like, they dispense justice in those Indian homes. And the population out of fear for those people is not coming forward. They are Indians. They are our fellow citizens. I have dealt with insurgency in my life. And I was asked a question way back in late early eighties. What's my perception of Mizraam, Mizraam, Mizraa Lega, Lai Nega and Fizho Nara Lega? Who had voted against India? My reply was, which was not my utno reply, but words of Dr. Ramon Odoya. They are dissatisfied and angry sons of mother India. You remove the cause of their dissatisfaction, where anger will go. And I was asked to go ahead and talk about negotiations with Lai Nega. And it was such a change, a traitor became a patriot in a span of six years. There is one part of the story. We have to take care of every Indian in a country. There is no choice because people's patience is running out. The second part, this India, Bharat, what is the profile of this? Small and marginal farmer and farm laborer. Laborer mostly come in the cities or other states in search of their job. They migrate. They are by the market. Small and marginal farmer is an entrepreneur, owner of the land, but she. All petty traders for a small marginal profit, they make the goods reach anywhere. They are also entrepreneurs, but she. Third category, all artisans, services anywhere. They are also entrepreneurs, but she. We unshackle the business in Gristi in nineteen ninety-one, after we reached the lowest point of our economy, when we had to mortgage our gold to get bearing out for our farmers' change. We open, we unshackle the country for the rich people, for the well-able people. And they have brought a change in the country. Time has come when we have to unshackle that once. Because they are possible job creators of the future, not job seekers. And unfortunately, the last ten years, I found the government was talking creating jobs, creating jobs. Not talking about these people. I know their landholdings are small. You cannot do anything about that. But certainly, productivity of that land can maybe do two and a half to three times. I know water is short in this world going to be. But then why not shift to great preparation system? I know there is no electricity everywhere. I could talk today at least, when eighteen crores was the per megawatt installation cost of solar power. Today it's come down to six and a half to seven crores. It is vibrant. Why it can't be given in a country which is plenty of sunshine? No, you're definitely reluctant to us. Because they don't feel the shortages. No, American government will demand to us, it is our own solution we have to bring out. And also decentralized power, which doesn't need transmission anywhere. These are few questions I have to, I'm raising. The most important point should be probably saying, there is a town and country planning department in every state of India. Ladies and gentlemen, they all did town planning. Nobody did country planning at all. The result was, because town planning was easy, you know, Kushi area, like, or state capital, or cities, we did it. Country planning was neglected, which means they were not taken care of by any plan. The matter was, just for their survival, people from rural India came to me, say, for survival. Delhi with a population of three lakhs in nineteen forty-seven is today one crore eighty lakhs. With forty lakh people, floating population coming every day in the house. Ring road was supposed to be a boundary of Delhi to Star Trek. In nineteen sixty, our one plan was converted into outer ring road. Nineteen seventy-one plan was converted into outer ring road. I don't know.
You can go on Jaffa side, it has gone young, Dharmada also.
If you go on Karnal side, it's reaching almost there. If you go on Roker side, it's already crossed that. If you go on Batra side, Koshi Peravani cross. So what has happened in the process? We have created slums. Either poor slums and even rich slums. When I came to Delhi in nineteen eighty-five, settled down here, I got a house in Zeta Kailash too. People told me, oh my god, it's a dummy, pass, look at it. Ladies and gentlemen, I say in a four-star snub, with all the facilities. Because my house doesn't get any breeze from outside, I have to lock it up to ensure that the dust doesn't come in my house. Second, I don't get any sunshine with the day. What is nature here? What is the quality of life you are offering me after sixty-five years of planning this as well? I'm not giving you. So we need a change, let's be really clear about it. That's the first part. We need a change. Second part, what kind of change also? It has to be kept in mind, the legal system of the country, which is called constitution of India. And it has to be done by the people who are part of governance in the constitution of India. And there are two sets of the people who are governing this nation. A, civil servants, B, political leadership. Civil servants of this country are chosen after very, very careful screening. Today I can say for the current year, six lakh people applied for all India civil services. And only less than thousand people were selected. And another twenty-five lakh who are qualified to appear in the exam did not have a guts to appear in there. Brilliant people join civil services, I have no complaint on that. Through a fair system of selection. And they are the rulers who give the continuity to all of this part. Baggy train them or don't train them, that's a different answer, but they are the finest from the years. Now I'll come to the political leadership. If people want to grow, they have to raise their aspirations. Because I am part of politics also, so I can talk about that. They have to raise their aspirations, anybody. When you raise your aspirations, you have to perform well. If your aspirations are raised, you perform, you feel very satisfied and you are happy about it. It's a achievement. But you have raised the aspiration and your performance is lowered by any reason. A gap between the two is of frustration. That's why this satisfaction builds an individual. When a group of people get together, it's a dissatisfaction of the group. Society finding state and countries. This, that dissatisfaction, the call of two hundred districts in the world, that's right. Tell us. We have noticed that. Our political leaders are one, who are put above this heroism. That's why. If you look at the lowest level of our governance, a village, there is a village, Panchat. The president and the members are elected members. Secretaries, a Patwari or a Karati, whatever, the lowest revenue officer. If you look at block, block provoke members, block government officer is the secretary. If you look at district, zila provoke and members, deputy commissioner, senator or GM, district head is the secretary. You look at the state, there is a council of ministers held by chief minister and the bureau des, chief secretary supported by secretary of principal secretary, they are all. And finally at the national level, it is the prime minister and council of ministers, where cabinet secretary and all other secretaries are the one who are. Why they are cabinet? Because they go every five year. And they have to understand the rising aspirations of people. They promise to them, we will fulfill your promise with your aspirations. They understand all that and they are the risk, they are the accountability to a people. When they come back, when they are elected, they make policies and programs with the help of civil services to meet those aspirations. And they are executed, they are part of that effort and they come and they have to foresee that. And the last part, sometimes the legal boundaries are inadequate to meet those aspirations. Then they can change the borders. They have the role of the legislators. So whatever planning commission has to come, it has to respect this part, that information has to flow. Now I'll come to the most vital part. What did our forefathers see when India got freedom? Proceeding forty-seven years from nineteen oh one to nineteen forty-seven, our GDP growth rate was one percent. Our population growth rate was also one percent. Actual year growth was zero, we were ten percent. What did we do then? Why did it happen? Because there were very large families. Our life expectancy was twenty-nine years. Infant mortality date was four hundred plus. There used to be famines, there used to be epidemics and vast majority of population moved this area. Our forefathers thought, you have to be five things to do here. First was justice and dignity of every citizen, that's why we got a democracy. Which is there. But can we have dignity and justice? If anybody is hungry, hungry in the country. So long people are hungry, they will eat food. Anybody who is ignorant, so long there is no education, people are ignorant, they can exploit it. We can help, so long people are weak, so people are frightened. So first three requirements to give them with justice and dignity are food, education and safety. All three are important. On food friendly, I have not done that badly, I will certainly say that, you will like, well, but nutritious diet for every citizen is a question mark. Have you done that? It's still a challenge. This is a failure of the plans. Education. I'm making a statement, don't mind it, it may sound very harsh. Nineteen forty-seven, we had few lakhs in medical days. Graduates were close to a lakh. Postgraduates, thirty-five thousands. Doctors, two thousand. Today, we have meticulous crores. Graduates also numbers. Postgraduates, tens of lakhs on the high side. Doctors also close to tens of lakh. Many more, I don't understand this. Ladies and gentlemen, India was more educated in nineteen forty-seven as compared to today. We have degree holders, no shit shop. That piece of paper is there. But all people say they are not employed. The degree piece of paper, warranty ticket is there, but you are not a local agent. This is education. This is important when we are developing a human resource, one resource. Any plan has to be around this human resource only. Why it's meant for him? That's the first thing we forgot. Then there are five natural resources which are owned by the state. Rithi, Jal, Vaivu, Akash, Abhi. Land is a resource. You are sitting here in Luton's Delhi. Here land is worth about four hundred to five hundred, two rupees an acre. Same Matti Pathar. But there are places in India, like, where land is less than two naxa an acre. Why this so? Because people want it here, nobody wants to go there. The degree of modern development is very clearly understood by the way of land moving. It's a same resource. I don't mind any change, any difference. But that has to be there. All government took place around these areas because the land value would wake up. Speculation was very high, nobody wants to go there. So any plan has to go there. Third, Vaivu, whole world is crying about pollution. When I came from Mizraam to home, six I could breathe properly. I requested to master the parish, chief minister, give me a unit in, to master so that I can survive. So I live six to seven months in a year, possibly, I spend there. I breathe fresh air, I get pure water, I get pure food and pure thought process of people around me also. So I'm surviving in that. But are we doing here? When we come to this world, the first act is we cry. Cry means we are announcing our arrival, that yes, I've come. People who have brought me here, please take care of me. And they do take care of me, I don't deny that. The second act to survive in this earth is, we have to breathe fresh air. We cannot survive even for a few hours without air. And what do I get? When I enter this world, I breathe oxygen and give you back CO2. Pollution. I drink water further to survive and I give you urine and perspiration again for pollution. Then whatever I ate, consumed for my energy, again I polluted the place. So from day one, I'm polluted. Did somebody break into education and I'm polluted? I have to take care of this pollution whenever I grow up. It's not part of the education structure. Whereas our entire ganth, our entire knowledge is talking about that. We didn't pay attention to this, that's a local part. So I'm talking about here, you have to have green areas. We made complete jungle that we have. Then energy, sunshine is more energy, coal, carbon bar, everything, all the energy. And food is energy for the earth, by the way. So all kind of foods are required in a balanced diet. And all these energy resources are only talked about by a model which has to come from abroad. Sunshine is our nature's gift, have you taken care of that? We are lost in this. That's energy part. Space also belongs to space because anything you want to do in there, you need the space permission and water, that's the target. We have used waters in Punjab, like the state from which I come from, muscly lesson. Flood irrigation. Spoil the soil also now and there are areas where there is no water. Surah Aman Sari, did we do land and water management in the whole nation as a plan? Is it an operating? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm part of you only. I'm putting the blame in finger on me, not on anybody else. These are the areas to be planned. I'll tell you this marks for you. Twenty-eighth December, I had gone for a holiday to Gujarat, two thousand two. That time I was sitting in Orda, so I stayed in the Raadhon. My son joined me and my wife. And that is the why Odisha president Prime Minister came to meet me in Raadhon. So it was a five-day visit because I was going to Sogna and Varka and Forbata and off the journey. And during discussion he said, even you are staying in various places for five nightfalls I had here. When you come back, give me the price, please, because you are just about a year and a half away. As a chief minister. Since I was part of BJP camp in Google Gates and I was involved in the process of planning for development areas. Please send me or should I go back? And on third January, two thousand two, we met. And he again gave it. One, I only told him, that is the why. You have only three price. Number one water, number two water, number three water. You are stuck, yes, you are right. Because every year I found a kilometer, half a kilometer queue in a village, you know. People holding a pencil, queue for the water. I said, for people to survive, you need water. If you have to have any culture, don't need water, if you want industrial services, you need water. And we discussed for three months, after that I never met him over this time. Only thing discussed was, there are seventeen thousand traditional ponds which were there in good old days. That was the data I had known. And interlinking of rivers, Yam, Aas, Brah, I was still in government had brought. Which nobody is taking the money, I said, you can take up and recharge those all, and we claimed that. Thirty-first March, two thousand fourteen. I get the data from another friend who was part of planning commission. Bob May, Rama Wada was second guy, water associate, the government of India, English advisor, planning commission. From those seventeen thousand model he brought back, he has created six lakh, nine thousand, small, medium, big water bodies in Gujarat. This is the only state where groundwater has come up. Sujaram, Suplamp and river, new canal which is made, has brought about sixty thousand hectares of irrigation to that area and the water tables call also. And I only requested, already sent him a letter, why can't it be repeated for the whole country? And I tell you, we can do it and still certainly. Because we have places where access to water is there, or some every year they are flushed and every year they are droughts. And both are running businesses for making money by the people that use. The last part I would certainly say. Housing for all, he has declared, France, which is a cheap one, by self-finance, you don't need it. But housing for who? In the last fifteen years, ladies and gentlemen, we created houses only for rich and super-rich and very few for middle class. You need houses for economically weaker sections, EWS. You need houses for LIG, forty percent demand, thirty percent demand, twenty percent MIG. Ten percent for high-income and super-rich. In the last fifteen years, where real estate companies have gone for a massive after-station. Forty percent ill-oiled, thirty percent ill-oiled, twenty percent part of it. And the balance ten percent complete. And the balance ten percent complete, ninety percent. Today, you have houses around Delhi, you can see, and every big city you can see. There is a large inventory of houses lying unoccupied, it's a hundred percent ready, ninety percent ready, seventy percent ready. They are owned as second or third or fourth house by people who had money. They are not going to live in those houses. And people who need the houses cannot afford to go there. What an imbalance. So hundred smart cities, yes, agree. But why not fifteen hundred to thousand small towns around sixty to seventy villages? Who bring in economic impact as a plan? And when you want to do everybody, because sophisticated, emotional and financial security behind it. We need a change, I would say. The change has to be human centric. Every city, because it is a lot crazy. Everybody aspires to grow in India. And I strongly believe, if you put every Indian on growth path. Nation will grow automatically, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. You have given us more reason why we should respect you as we have all been speaking. Thank you so much. Very briefly, before we go to the next address by Dr. Rupakchakthubadhyay. And concluding remarks, I would like to invite Dr. Prakash Chawla. Who will present a one-two minutes report on the exercise that we did on the silver chain on the issue of new avatar of planning commission. The responses that we have received and the papers and abstracts that we have received, Dr. Prakash.
Thank you, Ravi. Before proceeding further, I would like to take this opportunity to share the feedback we have received from different corners. India Policy Foundation and Forum of Attritions had invited ideas, suggestions from research scholars, academicians. Bureau greats and policymakers. And the result is very interesting, we have got a number of responses. We have received twenty-three research papers and more than sixty-three opinions and viewpoints. In a prescribed questionnaire, we had signed to the respondents. It shows the enthusiasm. Among the participants about this issue. I think every person is interested in sharing his ideas. About the new entity. Because everybody is bothered about the basic amenities, thori, kapra or makam. This shows the importance and significance of the theme of this seminar. So this is an important. Significant event. Focusing on the future development of India. On the basis of the research papers we have received and the feedback. We will collect from today's seminar, we are going to submit a report to the government of India. We hope that this report. Will be very, very fruitful to the government. To lay out. The structure and objectives of the new entity. That is the new avatar of the planning commission. Finally, we are thankful to all the scholars, academicians, policymakers for making contributions. To such an important thing of national importance, thank you very much.
Thank you, Prakash. May I now request to Dr. Rupakchakthubadhyay to present his views and close the session.
Shri Kody, Shri Subramya, Raviji, Rakeshji. Thank you very much for inviting me to share some findings on this topic. I should clarify, I mean, you are probably wondering what a foreign organization is doing. On a debate that is essentially domestic. But I should clarify one thing, the forum of federations is not a, we are not a scriptive organization. We are an international organization concerned with issues around federalism. And why that is important in this context is because India is a federal country. And we have, and India is a member country of the forum of federations. So it is our obligation to share to the extent possible international experiences on how planning proceeds. Mr. Kody's remarks very correctly said that planning commission are not planning is necessary. And India was certainly not unique in having a planning commission or a planning ministry. There are many countries around the world who set up these sorts of bodies in nineteen fifty. The fact of the matter is, is most, what I have called modern economies have moved on and done away with such bodies for obvious reasons. However, a friend, a friend and colleague, a former bureaucrat, very succinctly remarked to me recently that India has. The most highly refined Victorian system of administration. So clearly, the abolition of the planning commission provides an opportunity for reform much beyond just the planning process. The most important points I want to make are threefold. First, that, as again to Liam's, I thought Mr. Kody said, you still need to challenge. Second, we are talking of the, 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 the doctor of the seminar says, you are part of the planning commission. The question arises to eat. And people talk about entities to replace the doctor of the planning commission and the submissions and so on. The question is, do you really need the entity? Do you need a new entity that specifically does this? Or can these functions be pursued by existing institutions? And the third thing to consider is the planning, the planning, and I think it's very important this point. The planning is not just about finances. There is, there is a much broader approach to this. Based on the submissions that want to see and on at least three pieces, three pieces of research I've seen in the course of the last few months. Two, two of the authors of those pieces are present here with the audience. And I should acknowledge them, we ought to acknowledge them. One, Mr. Amita Padde, who speak on a panel later, and the other is Mr. Aditya Kanta. Have actually in recent times put some thought into what, what a successor. Planning Commission might look like. And indeed, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that in the last week or so, we've actually had some rather delicate discussions on Facebook. About what might this might look like. But, but the important point that I want to make is that going forwards in any modernized economy. It's important to focus more on outcomes rather than outputs. It doesn't matter in a year how many village wells you dig or how many hospitals you, hospital beds you create. If at the end of the day, nutrition, health, welfare targets an allotment. So there has to be a more realistic approach to this. The second thing. Is that the abolition of the planning commission provided an opportunity to change the mindset of the administration. To look at monthly year, medium range financial planning. And what this does, and I, I, in my past years, under the forum of federation, we were in many countries. And many countries have moved to monthly level, monthly year planning. It is what it does is it avoids what in some parts of the world are called March Madness. Which means if you don't spend your hundred by March, you lose the money. Which means even people end up spending money on various things, new office furniture, you know, all kinds of things that really are not productive. Extinction. So one has to revise the meaning, so one does financial planning. And the third issue for which the forest, the forum, makes the forum particularly relevant. Is that India is not only a set of countries, but in the course of the last sixty years, the states have become much more prominent. As, as deliverers of public services, they have much greater financial capacity than before. But there really is no institutionalized way in which to bring on board the views of the states. Or indeed, other entities, local governments, they know the state. And so looking forward, anybody that has a planning function, a strategic planning function, a prospective planning function. Has to have some institutionalized way of taking into account the input of the state. Because there are a number of service delivery subjects where there is self-care education, which are in the jurisdiction of the state. And if you cannot set the cooperation with states, if you cannot have a common vision with them and align with a common vision together. And you will never be able to achieve the outcomes that are planned. And so this is, in my view, very important. And a very important part of bringing states and other entities on board is, is that it has to be. A process in which politicians are engaged. Because at the end of the day, with due respect to my friends who are bureaucrats, former bureaucrats. It is the politicians who have to go back, stand up in parliament, answer questions and go back to the people. Make sure that whatever vision is being implemented is the one that people want. And without, without political engagement, and this is why experience in other parts of the world. Whether it's countries as, as poor as Ethiopia or advanced as Canada and Australia or Germany. It is the politicians at one level who have to be engaged in the process of prospective planning. Because they are the ones who give the officials the mandate through which, through which planning and delivery is undertaken. In, in the course of the coming years, I hope that we will be, the forum can be helpful and more engaged with various institutions in the country. And as I said, you know, we are not a scriptive organization. Planning processes, administrative processes in each country are a hunch on its own unique social, political, economic circumstances. But what we can do is we can share with you experiences from other parts of the world. Both the good lessons but also the bad lessons. Thank you very much for the talk.
Thank you, Dr. Chakthubadhyay. I should be blamed for not managing the time properly, it's my mistake, I'm so sorry that we cannot have question and answer session right now. But during tea, of course, you can interact with the speakers and the speakers of the next session. But my professor used to say that, you know, go ahead with the success, what your mistakes you do, they belong to me. And one of my professors presented of Pichu, so blame, please blame him for my mistake. The next session, we are going for a break, thank you very much, everyone present to the digesting entries. The next session is starting at twelve o'clock. The session will be chaired by Dr. Rupakchakthubadhyay. And the panel members will be Professor Manoj Pandey, the Institute of Pahami Coles. Professor Ashwini Mahajan, Kokan Veedhur, Sudeshi Jagannanvanch, Sri Amita Pandey, Executive Secretary of State Council. Professor Dolly Arora, IIPAA, and Shri Savisaran, VP of the Research Foundation. Thank you very much, it's starting at twelve o'clock, thank you.